For the study session agenda for June 17th, for the City of Wheat Ridge. I guess, do we want to take roll, Gina? You want me to wait?
I can, yeah. Just a minute. Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Bud Starker. Bud informed me that he would be absent tonight. Joyce J.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Mike Stites. Tracy Langworthy. Tracy, I didn't hear from her, has anyone? Okay. Joe Demott. Joe. Kristy Davis.
Here.
And also informed, obviously, the mayor has got a conflict tonight and Mr. Reinhardt is chairing the meeting.
Thank you. I'd like to open with a public comment and members of the public have a three minutes to speak on any issue that's on the agenda for this evening. If you step forward and state your name for the record, if there's any members of the public that want to speak tonight. On any topic, there won't be another opportunity this evening to speak the way these meetings are held. Thank you. Let the record reflect that Tracy Langworthy arrived. The first item on the agenda is an update on the Zopie Circus during the Carnation Festival and Gina Halassee is going to give us a quick talk. Thank you.
Okay. I did a one sheet for you and we'll just pass them around so you guys can. Big table for. So I'll just read through the bullets real quick and I'll also pass around this book of examples that I'd like to get back because I'm still filling it up. So we'll just pass that along as we go. Online tickets open June 1st and we're already selling, so that's good news. We've streamlined a barcoding system that will be used this year so folks can actually print their tickets at home. This is going to save us costs on printing hard tickets. We won't have to print as many. There is also an advertising coupon available on the back and Right Coast snapped that right up. The $5 discount is available online this year and we're offering nine different online codes that coordinate with the ads to track effectiveness of that publication, which I think will be really helpful to see since we beefed up marketing this year if what we did is working. We have hard tickets available at the rec center only and those sales are starting tomorrow officially. Right Coast Pizza Bounce Back coupon is on the back of the ticket again and they had a really great response last year, so they were all over it this year. The 24-hour printing sponsor you see on the circus tickets, they're actually sponsoring all of the festival and circus printing, not completely, but they're giving us below wholesale pricing which saves us thousands of dollars collectively. So we have officially combined the printing and marketing costs of the festival and the circus this year. We've secured nearly $10,000 in cash sponsorships for the circus and I'm still working on a few more. I've sold two Jeffco field trips for 5,000 and the group sales are at 500 to date. Wednesday, August 21st, will be a City of Wheat Ridge night with a group rate of 50% off offered to city employees and their families. And this performance is not open to the public, it's a closed private performance for city employees only and we'll send out a flyer and see how many we get. I had an extra night, so I thought I'd, might as well, if they're willing to perform, we're willing to make money off of it. The Piazza Fountain will be sponsored by Amato's again and that's a $1,500 in-kind value. And now that we've moved it to 44th, he said he's going to give me the big fountain. He's really excited. We've partnered with the Auto Metzi Group, which is the Italian car show event that happens every year. And they will host an exotic car showcase on Sunday, August 18th and Sunday, August 25th from 11:00 to 4:00 in front of the circus tent. So we're really excited about that because we're going to have 20 to 30 exotic cars. I'm talking Ferraris, Lamborghinis, Maseratis, I mean some vintage stuff that's just amazing. So I'm really excited about that. It'll definitely be something for people to stop and see. It'll be a lot of attention for those days. We have increased and combined marketing efforts with the festival to get more exposure for both. So we have ads, as you see the ads, you can tell we're starting to brand the two of them together. Last year it was kind of disconnected. They had their advertising, a circus had their advertising, so this year we're kind of putting it all together so it looks more cohesive and we're actually, we're saving lots of money doing it this way. And we're getting lots more exposure. So the ads will be in City and Mountain Views Magazine, which has a distribution of 40,000, Neighborhood Gazette, which has a distribution of 12,000, Your Hub Denver Post, 67,000, the Westward Summer Guide, which I brought, it's in there, but I actually just got it. And it's a really nice magazine-type piece and our ad is in there. And this is not your typical westward publication, it's a really nice, all about events. So I'll pass this around, you guys can look at that. And then also, you have some of the copies of the Andiamo, but just so you know, Andiamo is the Italian community newspaper, so this is real targeted marketing to the Italian community and they're very involved in the festival and do a lot of free editorial and stuff. And this is just, I just wanted to show you, you know, what the paper looked like. You have some of the ads copied in there. And then as you probably know, we had an editorial when the Circus Bucks debuted in the connections and that's in there as well. We will have lots of editorial in these publications as well as the Gazette and City and Mountain Views and the Wheat Ridge Transcript. We will also get the cover of Andiamo in August and they'll do a special insert and the Gazette will be doing a four-page insert mid-July. We have an online sponsor this year, it's ColoradoKids.com, and they have the $5 coupon up and they have about 60 bloggers. I guess these mommy bloggers are pretty avid in getting people out to events, so they're going to be talking about the event in July and August and this is a value of about $800. So that was a good partnership. We also have an online presence on the Westward Newsletter, which will come out right before the event, and also some Italian cultural events, we've got the word out on those websites. We plan to distribute about 250 posters and 5,000 event brochures in July and August. The Circus Bucks are redesigned to look like money. And if, I have them, so if anybody wants to take some and hand them out around town, we'll just pass some out. And I have an envelope of them. I can leave some and we'll get them out and put some here, they're going to be all over the place. These will be, we're going to distribute about 50,000 of these in the community at sponsor locations and surrounding metro areas, plus several summer events in the Denver metro area. Peak Beverage, which is a new Wheat Ridge business, I'm told, will be handling the event alcohol for the Carnation Festival, which will be, add to the circus revenue without any upfront risk, so they're really thrilled about this partnership. It's a great partnership, they're going to also be a sponsor in giving us about $1,000 worth of in-kind donations, so we're pretty jazzed about that. It's going to make our lives really easy. And then we are finalizing logistics on water, power, you know, finding grass hay that doesn't have alfalfa and all that stuff. So we're, everything's on track, everything's going good and we're pretty excited. So any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have just one quick question.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
So I know one of the things for fundraising was to find some major sponsors. Is that in this list? I know that, I mean, there's like, you said something about cash donations.
Yeah, Belco is a major sponsor of the circus. The festival has their own sponsors. But the circus, Belco's a $5,000 sponsor. And then I also have, it's kind of an odd sponsor, but it's kind of a popcorn sponsor, but they're a $2,500 sponsor. Right Coast Pizza is sponsoring the tickets. The printer is sponsoring part of the printing because I didn't get a Circus Bucks sponsor. And we kind of held out a couple of weeks waiting, hoping for, I can't even tell you how many people I hit up, but...
Yeah, because I know that was one of your goals, because you were thinking if we were doing it another couple of years, then perhaps someone would tag on to it for a two-year type of thing, because a lot of people look at it and...
The ones that participated last year, we got a lot of that back. I just wanted to do the Circus Bucks different this year because I thought they looked too much like a ticket last year, there was some confusion with guests.
They look cute though.
Yeah, so we kind of pitched it and it was, you know, it was a pretty healthy sponsorship for one person. Businesses are struggling this year, but we did, you know, it's all going to work out fine. It's actually better having just the festival and city logos, because now I can put them anywhere. When they had the Belco logo on it, first thing, I didn't want it. So, you know, I can put them anywhere now, so it's really going to work out, I think, better. And by saving on printing and we'll get some smaller sponsorships, it's all going to kind of even out in the end. So, but we still have a few more in the mix. Sherry's working on a couple of them and I think we'll do okay.
Ms. Pond.
Do you know where these Westward Summer Guides are made available?
They're all over Denver, just...
In the, with other westward publications, so in the...
I think so. That's a really good question. I know they have 80,000 that go out, it's on, I didn't bring my distribution notes, but I know they go out everywhere and they're, I'm pretty sure they're free, so I can find out later, you guys know.
Other...
Good work, a lot of stuff going on. The 10,000 cash sponsors, is that where we were last year, more or less?
Well, we were, it's where we were last year. We've definitely hit where we were last year. You know, I was kind of hoping for about 5,000 more and we'll, you know, we're not done yet, so we'll...
So we had a total of like 10,000 last year?
Yeah.
So maybe we'll get a little more.
Yeah, yeah, that's the goal. The goal was to increase marketing and ticket sales this year, so to make up for it, just because sponsorships are not what they used to be in the event world, so we're going to, and we definitely have beefed up marketing. And we're also going to be doing the bus shelters a couple of weeks out before the festival, so that'll be nice, because we'll have those six or eight locations around Wheat Ridge. So we've got a few extra things in the mix, I don't think I mentioned those, but we will be doing the bus shelters as well. And we also have Money Mailer, I forgot them too. They're 20,000 going out and then the Andiamo, I jumped ahead of myself, sorry.
More questions? Thanks again Gina, we appreciate it.
Well, we'll circle back with you guys as things.
Mr. Dahl, would you like to introduce the judge and his renewal municipal court? We've got new counselors here, so...
This is Judge Christopher Randall, he's been presiding municipal judge in our court since 2002, I believe. And the charter, the judge's contract comes up, microphone please. Under the charter, the judge's contract comes up for renewal every two years. The charter also provides that the judge's compensation is set by the council by ordinance. I know the judge has prepared a memorandum that should be in your packets along with, I think, the present contract. I think you should hear from the judge, he's prepared for this meeting and I know I was anxious to not only describe the court and his activities, but to meet the new members of the council that he hasn't had an opportunity to meet. After we've done that, I can get direction from you in terms of what you want to see on your agenda on this matter for next Monday, if we've got a draft ordinance ready, but that'll depend upon what you give us kind of a head nod on tonight, understanding you can't make a binding decision tonight as usual.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Judge Randall?
You know, I think everything's in the memo, it's pretty thorough, it's comprehensive, I've probably covered more than you folks ever want to read about me. I guess a couple of things to highlight. One, I'm not only the presiding judge, I'm the department director of the court and that's unusual. I don't, I don't think there's any other presiding judges that are court department directors. If they are, it's, you can probably count them all on one hand. And the reason I think that's significant for me is that that means I also oversee budgeting, purchasing, hiring, firing, administration. Now certainly I have Kirsten's help, you know, she probably does the bulk of all this, but I'm involved. So that's a little bit unique for a presiding judge. The second thing is that Chris Price, who's in Jerry's firm, I once asked him, what do you think of Wheat Ridge as far as what we handle and what we do compared with some of the other courts where Jerry's firm represents those cities? And I love the word that he used, he goes, "This place is beefy." And I think that's kind of a down and dirty description of what Wheat Ridge Municipal Court is like. And I think it's a substantial municipal court, it's, we do jury trials, we do domestic violence, we handle a broad array of crimes. If you look in the ordinance book, we've got everything from low-level stuff to high-level stuff. We're a court that can jail, so we, at all times, we probably have people in jail. We do jury trials, if I didn't mention that. We have a big juvenile docket, we have a big traffic docket. We have some interesting characters that come into Wheat Ridge, some live here, but I think what we have more so is the location of the city lends itself to people passing through that could be transient, people passing through with lengthy criminal histories, people passing through up to no good and then they do something here, shoplift, whatnot, and they end up in municipal court. So what I see are people with lengthy criminal histories, people that are probably here for something minor, but they are a high-risk person. They're felons that have committed a municipal ordinance violation and they're here, so they're high-risk individuals. I guess probably the next thing that's critical here is, I believe sentencing is critical in any criminal case, and I'm pretty slow and careful with sentencing. Sentencing should be individualized, it should be based on, I think there's about 10 or 15 things that you should look at in a sentence. I would say that a lot of sentences in municipal court are very straightforward and easy, like traffic sentences, but on the other hand, we've got people that have some significant issues that come in, drug and alcohol issues, mental health issues, lengthy criminal histories, things where it takes a little bit more effort on the part of the judge to find a sentence that's appropriate for that person. The latest lingo that we use now, we're supposed to address criminals' criminogenic needs and I think what that really means is that we look at, who is that person, who do they associate with? What can we do to prevent recidivism, recidivism for that individual? And it's not always an easy thing to do. Jerry, anything else you can think of? I know I listed a bunch of accomplishments, I do want to say about those accomplishments, there's a lot of them there. I didn't do any of that stuff alone. I had help from city staff and court staff, but I feel like we've done a lot. We probably do more than most municipal courts as far as accomplishments, developments, improvements, always looking how to improve the process, always working on this, that, or the other thing. I've noticed lately, we've had a lot of state legislation that's come down and it's requiring municipal court to tweak our restraining orders to comply with some collateral consequences of sentencing issues and that type of thing. So that's always going on and I think if you're a lazy presiding judge, you blow it off. I think if you're an involved presiding judge, you get on top of it and make the necessary changes, do it right. But any questions?
We invited Judge Randall in in part to introduce him to the new council members that hadn't had an opportunity to have him speak before, anything Kristy or George or anybody else for that matter, but... Go ahead Joyce.
I did read this extensive list of accomplishments and 11 of which I particularly noted. My question is, are those things that you're doing, which are, my gosh, teaching classes and foothills, animal shelter, et cetera, et cetera, are those, basically I'm asking, are you paid to do that or is this above and beyond what our usual time where we're at? Or is this above and beyond what our usual time where we're actually paying you to be working for us?
If, like foothills animal shelter, that's above and beyond. I, I did that on my own. But if it's something connected with the city, you know, I'm gonna, I'll build a city. But if it's not, if I'm just doing it because I think it's educational for somebody or I think it's going to be helpful for that agency, uh, I'm not going to... If I wouldn't do that as part of, as part of my job, I wouldn't build it to the city. If it isn't a normal part of...
That makes sense.
What I do on a day-to-day basis.
Right. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Demat.
Well, let me ask one more.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, I didn't catch...
How many, uh, hours would you say that you actually build a city weekly or monthly or...
25 to 30, and I'd say about 27, something like that. But I think the most I've ever worked is 32, and then I can't go below 25. I'm deemed a 25-hour employee, so if I go below that, I guess I lose that status, I don't know. But I always build minimum of 25.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Demat?
I just wanna say, I was here two years ago when, when the judge came in. He was, um, at the time, we did have to deny a raise because everything was just a little tight. But I just wanna say, I'm glad to see that it seems like you're asking for the same increase as you were last time. Is that, if I remember, it was 5%, it was just above 90.
Yeah, you know, I don't remember. That sounds, that's plausible, but I don't remember the...
I mean, my point is, I'm just, it, it's good to see you're not looking for 10%, looking to make up for what we've missed out on the last...
Correct.
Two years. It's, it's the same, same increase, so it is, you know, just a, you know, almost as the pay-for-formance plan kinda works with the other positions, so...
And it did always seem like every time, every time my contract would end every two years, it was always a bad time for us.
Yeah.
It did, it was just the worst time, so...
Yeah, I would say, I would support the increase this time. I know we passed last time and I'm glad to see it was, it's just a 5%.
Mr. Dahl, before we call for consensus, would you like to add any additional comments?
Couple of things. Um, one, I'd, and I, I do this regularly, I'd encourage the council members, when they get a chance, outside of this cycle, really any time, to visit the municipal court. I make a point of trying to show up and sit in the back once a year or so, and it is, uh, an important education just on so many levels. You, you, you see swathes of the community that you, that don't show up in this room otherwise, that are also, you know, are constituents in one way or another, that the court, that the court serves. You know, we provide a service. Sometimes that's a service they're, they're not, they didn't ask for, but it's a service that we provide, and it's important, I think, to see how that service is provided and how people respond to it, because they're not happy to be there, and that's often the case. But you've got a couple of choices when you have someone in a room that's not happy to be there. And if that person's treated respectfully and fairly and is given a fair opportunity to be heard, they'd much rather have not been in the room to begin with, but they leave with a very different impression of the city than otherwise. I often mention that municipal court is sometimes the only experience, the only contact that, that residents have with the city. There are other people that come into the council chamber and are otherwise involved, but there's a vast group of people that their only contact with the city is in the municipal court, and they're gonna form their opinion and perception of what the city is exclusively from how they're treated in the court. And for that reason, I encourage you to go. That's part of the education, also part, partly seeing, you know, just what kinda cases there are, what sorts of things the judge has to do and how the judge handles the variety of people with a variety of issues, you know? And, and some of them are less willing than others to, to, to listen. And so, the judge has to use various techniques to get people's attention, make sure the message gets across. It's a really interesting experience, and I would really encourage you to, to do that. And, and in a minute, I'll ask the judge maybe to suggest to you what court days are better ones or there's, you know, more going on that you would wanna, wanna see. The other thing the judge might respond to is, uh, the question of sentencing. And as you probably know, Judge, uh, every now and again, the council choose to adopt an ordinance that specifies a, a specific sentence for a specific violation. We had one just, just last week. You know, it comes up maybe once or twice a year. And, uh, I, I think it's, this is, now's the only time, probably the best time to, for, for the judge to kinda react and tell you, you know? The council, I know, sees that as message to the judge, whatever else you're doing, this is the, this is the minimum on, on this particular violation. Council's taken the social policy issues into consideration and, and wants that done. And you might wanna react to, to that. I have no idea what your answer will be, but I think I'd ask you and see...
Mandatory sentencing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it works okay most of the time, but there's always going to be that one person who has a special situation, that one person who's different from the prior 100 people that have done whatever that crime is. It doesn't happen much, but judges like to have the flexibility under those unique circumstances to either hammer that person. Some people deserve to be hammered. But then also, just as often, there's a person that needs a break. Mandatory sentencing, the judge is stuck.
Days, it's a good day to show up if we're a council member and wanted a arraignment versus trial versus, or call Kirsten and ask her what day this week could be a good one.
I'll tell you when the, the show is the best. Uh, but, but let me toot my horn a little bit or just tell you more about how court works. In any particular time, other than a couple of exceptions, when you walk in, a bunch of things could be going on. It could be somebody being sentenced, it could be the court determining the amount of restitution to be ordered, say, for medical bills for a victim. It could be somebody losing probation, it could be somebody going to trial, it could be a jury trial. Uh, it could be arraignments, which are your first appearance in court. Uh, it could be somebody coming in who's been ordered to, to go take a class. It could be the day that they have to come in and bring their proof of completion. So, you'll see everything from admin, things that are administrative in nature really like that, all the way to jury trials. But I think the most interesting group are the adult arraignment. So, these are adults only, it's their first time into court on that particular charge, and we typically do those on Mondays and Wednesdays at 1:00. And what I, what you would probably like about it, you're gonna see people charged with a minor trespassing to people who, who are here on their third or fourth domestic violence case. Uh, so you're gonna see the gamut of colorful individuals. One of the things we have in the city which makes Wheat Ridge unique is we have detox for Jefferson County. And so, the people in detox are drunk, they're, they create a row, they're, they'll be in here for adult arraignment. Those are usually some, uh, uh, interesting characters that have been over detox. And then we've had for years the Lutheran Medical Center, the hospital, and there's a, a segment of society who goes to the ER really that, that have mental issues, and they break up stuff, get in fights, fight with staff, damage hospital equipment. You'll see them in adult arraignment, too. And that, those are pretty, the, the detox patients and the hospital patients are a big part of that adult docket. I'd say we have two or three every adult docket section, and they are a challenging group. But any arraignment, adult arraignment?
Thank you. I think staff is, uh, either looking for a consensus to bring the, um, judge's contract forward at the next session or not, and I just didn't know if somebody, more questions or...
You've been six years since we've given you a pay raise. Based on what you've asked, which is 5%, that is about eight tenths of a percent per year. And on a 25 hours, that's about five grand here. When I think about what we pay or spend expenditure for our police force, which is a largest part of our budget, I think the work of that police force, so much of it is going through your decision and what happens further, which I think your ability, your experience, your fairness, um, I value it and I support the increase you've asked for.
The direction staff probably would need, so that I can prepare these materials for the packet would be, um, I'm sorry.
I was, um, was looking for someone to suggest a consensus or not to, to move forward that. Is there anybody would like to make a consensus?
I would like to. Like to make a consensus that the, uh, Judge Randall's contract be brought forth to...
Next available.
Or next available.
It would be next week, actually.
Meeting. Concerning is two-year contract and pay increase.
Is there, uh, any objection to Mr. Demat's consensus? Being none, I think we've, you have the direction you need, Mr. Dahl? All right, thank you.
Good, all right, thanks.
Next on the agenda is, uh, 38th Avenue Corridor Plan Implementation, and I guess, uh, Mr. Johnstone is going to be making the primary presentation to us.
I am, Mr. Reinhardt, thank you. So, a, a short PowerPoint, don't get scared, but just to keep us all kind of on the same page, uh, going through a, a brief presentation. Uh, we're happy to be, be here reporting out. Uh, we adopted, you adopted this, uh, the 38th Avenue Corridor Plan, uh, back in October of 2011, so it's been about 20 months since it's been adopted. Uh, we last did kind of our full report out to council on some of the metrics that we're tracking, uh, back in November of last year. Uh, we've recent collected a variety of data that I'll go over, uh, in, in a few moments, uh, and that's one of the things that we wanna report out to you on. Uh, but we also want to, uh, just kind of refresh ourselves on some of the things that, chiefly through your efforts, that we've accomplished, um, and then also some of the things that are on the horizon for the rest of this year. Uh, there's actually quite a bit, uh, in the works, and, uh, we're excited about that. So, in terms of, just to highlight a few of the accomplishments, and obviously, there's, there's a lot more information in the supporting memo that you got along with the attachments, uh, but we, again, you, uh, were successful in rezoning the corridor. A city-initiated rezoning of, uh, all but a handful of properties where, uh, property owners opted out, uh, back in October of last year. Uh, we've had a couple of projects move forward all, already, under that mixed-use neighborhood zoning. Uh, we think the big advantage of that zoning, in addition to having strong and appropriate design standards, is flexibility, uh, and ease of approval. As you're well aware, uh, by and large, with just a few, uh, minor exceptions, uh, all the approvals under the MUN zoning, as well as the other mixed-use zonings are administrative in nature, so they're streamlined, that's attractive to the development community in terms of having a certainty to the process and, uh, an expedited review timeframe. Uh, the leadership committee, uh, under Jerry Nealon and Britta Fisher's guidance, has been meeting regularly. They, they've been, uh, formed for about a year and a half. They formed, uh, January of, of 2012. Uh, they meet every four to six weeks. They have, uh, a couple of subcommittees, one for events, one for marketing. Uh, both of those committees have been doing a lot of good work as well. Uh, so we use them, uh, as a sounding board as well, uh, but they, uh, I think they've taken on those real key roles in terms of the branding, the marketing, uh, and the special events. Um, the road diet was implemented, the, um, the interim road diet, the, the big experiment as to whether the road, uh, could function in a three-lane section, um, along with the, um, associated amenities. So, the, uh, taking a look at what enhanced landscaping on the corridor would look like with the, uh, the temporary, uh, landscape planners, uh, taking a look at how pedestrian seating areas would work with three, uh, what we call pop-up cafes, uh, how that would feel on the corridor, um, how, what we tried was back-end parking, but how additional, uh, parking, on-street parking resources would function, uh, so that we were kind of testing all these different things. Uh, in addition, of course, the traffic functionality of the road under a three-lane scenario. Uh, so we'll report out to you in a, in a few moments on, on what we're hearing, uh, and, and seeing in terms of the data collection on, on various metrics, uh, related to the road diet. Uh, the branding and marketing, uh, the ridge at 38th, uh, brand, uh, and slogan and, and, uh, marketing, kind of, brand materials were approved last summer. Um, I'm real pleased with, with how that process worked out. The leadership committee was, uh, was very actively involved in that process, uh, along with public input. Britta, um, there was, has been working on evolving that into a more specific marketing effort, uh, and some real targeted, uh, advertising, as well as additional branding on the corridor physically in terms of using that, uh, the logo and brand, uh, graphically and visually, uh, on, on the corridor. Um, and then special events. Uh, last year, we had, uh, two special events that were hosted kind of jointly by the leadership committee, uh, in the city. Uh, in September, we had, uh, the kickoff event where the, where the brand was kinda rolled out. Uh, we had 2,500 people attend an all-day event, uh, that lasted well into the evening with two, uh, movie showings. So, uh, I think we were all super excited about, about how that worked out and how much excitement and buzz there was in terms of the people attending that. We had a great car show as part of that as well, uh, as well as additional things that tied back to some of the urban agricultural themes that the city, uh, on a broader basis, is trying to incorporate in, in terms of our, our image as a city. Uh, and then in December, we were super excited to be able to move the tree lighting ceremony and associated Santa activities and rides along the street, uh, fully over to 38th and, and, and really make that a special event and one that, uh, you know, logically, we, we would think would go in a, in a downtown. If we want 38th to be, uh, our downtown and our main street, it seems logical that you're gonna have your annual, uh, events like that, uh, in that location. So, excited that the, that the school district has been such a pleasure to work with in terms of letting us use the green, uh, and that relationship continues to be excellent. We've negotiated terms for, uh, for just, for doing events in, uh, 2014 and moving forward, and, uh, they've agreed that, uh, under certain conditions, those can, uh, include alcoholic beverages if we, if we find that to be an appropriate, uh, component of a specific event. So, that's a, a quick update of, of some of the things that we've accomplished. Um, in terms of assessed, assessment metrics, um, we, we thought it was really gonna be important on a variety of fronts to gauge over time, uh, the overall success of the project. I think, uh, when we talk about the project, it's a corridor plan, it's a long-range vision, it's a 20-year vision for what 38th Avenue, uh, could be as the city's main street in the future. Uh, it's not just about the road diet, it's about economic activity, it's about, uh, it's about the brand, it's about all those different things that are gonna be important in making it successful. Uh, so we indicated that kind of initially, um, it would be an 18- to 24-month timeframe, particularly in looking at the, the traffic assessments, which are, are critical. So, we, we do have, at this point, our first year-over-year data. Uh, we did show you, uh, traffic measurements from April of last year, and then in the fall, September, October, we did traffic counts. But this spring was really our first opportunity to get year-over-year data as to how the road is functioning, um, relative to before we implemented the road diet. And, and I think, uh, we're glad to, to get more specific as, as you'd like, but I think our overall observation, speaking on behalf of our, our traffic engineers at my own peril, but, uh, is, is that things are kinda moving along, um, as was expected. Uh, there's, there's not any clear trend that we're getting, um, a lot of, uh, traffic that's moved over to adjacent facilities like 44th or 41st or 35th or 32nd. I'll speak a little bit more to that because there's maybe one data point that's of interest. So, generally, uh, those things are functioning as expected. Uh, speed limits are about 10 miles an hour slower. Uh, we thought that would be the case, and we're, I think, pleased that it's the case. We, we wanted to have a traffic calming effect in terms of making it a more pedestrian-friendly environment, making it frankly, a safer street in terms of, uh, previous speeds, you know, being averaging in the 46, 47 type, uh, area where we're probably excessive and probably dangerous. The bike ped counts, not a lot of real interesting data there, um, not a lot of movement either up or down. Same thing with accidents, we don't really see a clear trend line. There was a slight increase year-over-year, but, um, uh, it was no greater than it was a couple of years ago, so no real clear trend line there. Uh, in, in getting data from and speaking with our emergency responders, um, they are, are feeling like the road is functioning adequately for their needs, and actually, response times have gone down in the case of Wheat Ridge Fire, uh, albeit slightly. Uh, not to make, not to consider that some sort of a trend, but, uh, but they haven't gone up. Uh, I did mention on the traffic count, uh, perspective, uh, the one slight anomaly was traffic, um, ADT, average daily, uh, counts on 38th Avenue between Wads and, I think it was Pierce, or maybe... Were down about 15%, and on a parallel facility, 32nd Avenue, they were, they were up about 12%. So, we don't know if those two things are related, it's just one year-over-year data point, but that's certainly something that we'll be monitoring, 'cause that could be the case. Uh, so we'll keep you informed on that. Economic indicators are, uh, a real critical measurement of whether we're being successful. Steve Art provided a memo, um, on those three indicators, sales tax, business openings, and vacancy rates. Uh, we think they're all showing, uh, positive trends and are real pleased with that because really, on some... on some level, that's the ultimate measure of success, is that it's a successful commercial corridor with thriving businesses. In terms of the road diet, on a more anecdotal basis, I think, you know, certainly everyone has an opinion, I think. Definitely mixed reviews on the back-end parking. I think some people think it's a great idea, some people think it's a wacky idea, that's input that we'll take as we move forward with the final design of what the street section looks like. Council is well aware, and you've given us direction on this topic, but the planners were maybe not as impactful as you would have hoped. We've tweaked the location and the planning areas this year to focus them in the main street area to have more of an impact in 2014. And I think we have to keep in mind that, you know, they were always anticipated to be an interim project and not the permanent, so just to give an idea of how landscaping could add to the character of the corridor moving forward. And then the pop-up cafes, I think we've got two of them that have been highly programmed and a huge success. We've got one less so, but we've got a new tenant going into that one, and we may see more activity. So, next steps. We're moving forward actively in the coming months with a new website that'll really roll out the brand, so that the marketing efforts and the joint marketing efforts with other businesses on the corridor will be ramping up in the next month. We've got those four events that are calendared for this year, and those are all approved by the School District. We've got two major capital projects, the enhanced pedestrian crossings with the flashing rapid signals at Benton and at Uppam. And then we've got two span banners that will span the roadway that are being installed over the course of the summer and will be available for use for the Carnation Festival, so that's, will be an important way to get the word out on that and the circus. We're in the process of interviewing and contracting with a Streetscape Design Consultant as directed by council back in March, so that's a real critical step in the process. And that, the reason for that is to move forward with a proposed 2014 first-phase capital project that would be considered in the 2014 budget. And then, of course, economic development. I think we're always focused on economic development, as I've said several times this evening, that's really the ultimate gauge of success, and it's a high priority for all of us in terms of encouraging economic development on the corridor in a real active way. And with that, I'm available for questions, as are other staff.
Questions, anyone? Mr. Paul?
Last time we did traffic counts in October, did we get Pierce counts?
When we did them, did we do Pierce counts? I'm not aware that we did, yeah.
Other...
So, when it comes to the traffic counts, you were saying that it didn't change on the other streets, so are you referring to Thirty-Second and Forty-Fourth?
Right, with except for that one number that I mentioned between Wadsworth and Pierce on Thirty-Second. The other ones were a little bit up, a little bit down, but in the five percent or less range, really not statistically significant in our minds.
Okay.
When is the, when are the RFP responses or the decision on Streetscape Design firms expected?
The Streetscape Design Consultant, we're trying to get in front of council on July eighth for a contract, and over the course of July, the installation of the poles and the reflect, pedestrian signals will be complete.
So, you're bringing forward a recommendation on the eighth of July?
Yes, that's our intent.
Thank you.
We interviewed consultants last week, and we're finalizing those negotiations.
Ms. Jay? I'm going to work around it if we, I'm going to...
You know, the only question I have was, kind of, that landscape consultant, what kind of areas will be touched? Meaning, what will they be looking at as far as design elements?
It'll really be the full gamut, ranging from, starting with finalizing the street section, so the ultimate lane configuration, and then everything behind the curb, so the landscaping, the hardscaping, whether it's raised planners, whether there are other hardscape elements such as benches, trash receptacles, lighting, refinding signage, different ways to brand the corridor with hardscape improvements, surface materials in terms of, you know, brick pavers versus concrete applications, and then a detailed materials palette as well, so it's really the full gamut.
Very.
And I'd be remiss in not mentioning public art, and that is part of the scoping as well.
Great. Like a whole wrap. Wrapping around the whole thing, meaning every portion is touched.
Any, anything more, Mr. Paul? Ms. Langworthy?
I guess I'm looking at the data, and when you look at the change in percentages, you've got to wonder a little bit where those cars go because they don't just disappear after Pierce. I mean, if the, there was fewer traveling along Thirty-Eighth, and there's more on Thirty-Second, until you get to Pierce, and all of a sudden, those numbers, I mean, if they're actually traveling a distance on there, when those numbers carry a consistent percentage across? Because, I mean, at Pierce, they just stop.
Can I defer that to our traffic engineer?
At the six-month data collection, we did notice that Thirty-Second, West of Pierce, has a little drop. I don't remember the number exactly, it was hovering around five, six percent, and this time, it increased to twelve percent. I think we're going to look at Pierce later this summer to study the before data and also collect the data when schools get back in to kind of take a closer look at Pierce Street, if there's anything that changes to account for that increase on Thirty-Second Avenue, if you think that's what we should look at.
Well, I'm not concerned so much as the increase at Thirty-Second. I mean, I am, but that's not my, I mean, statistically speaking, you don't have an increase of twelve percent between Wadsworth and Pierce, and then from Pierce to Harland, a decrease of one percent. I mean, those cars have to go somewhere. If they were on Thirty-Second at Wadsworth between, I mean, at Pierce, they have to go somewhere, right?
Is it a logical conclusion that the eight or nine hundred cars a day that are on Thirty-Second Avenue between Pierce and Wadsworth, that are not on Thirty-Second Avenue between Pierce and Sheridan, are going onto Pierce? Is that a conclusion one can draw from this data?
I think you can come to that general conclusion because it's a collector's street.
Right.
And then they're going outside, I mean, they're going down.
They're going in front of my house, they are.
Well, no, I know they don't have counts on Pierce, but if they're, if they're going east...
They don't evaporate.
They're not, they're not doing it at Thirty-Eighth, they're not doing it at Forty-Fourth because those numbers haven't increased at the same level, so they have to be taking Pierce south.
Or north.
Or north. From this, you can't tell.
Well, I mean, if, well, we don't have counts on Pierce to tell, but they're not going on to Forty-Fourth, and they're not going on to Thirty-Eighth. I guess I'm just curious where, you know, a large group of people are going.
I've been having huge parties, huge, huge parties at my house.
Okay.
Hundreds of cars a day.
Maybe they are, I don't know. And then the other one that I kind of noticed is that we have the traffic calming between Wadsworth and Harland, well, actually, a little bit closer, and then you get that at, I don't know where, just before Sheridan, all of a sudden, their speed starts boinging up again, so as soon as the traffic goes and opens up, they gun their engine. Are we, I'm not, I mean, the numbers don't lie, but are we seeing any increases in traffic there where, you know, all of a sudden, people are kind of clearing of that slow speed and when they gun their engine, they're causing more incidents? I just wonder about that.
The speed measurement at that point is not much of an increase either, as you can see.
It isn't, but I mean, that's just, that's where they just pop right out.
That's where they pop right out of it. I mean, I've seen some of those people kind of...
Right, but if you compare the speed limit, I think it's pretty close to where you want them to be.
Right, so we still feel comfortable with that.
And it's not looking at that much room.
No, not normally because of the light, but just want to make, I, just looking at them.
I think that we'll be happy if we, if it's very close at the speed limit, I think that's our aim.
Reading the numbers today.
More, any more questions? Mr. Demott? Mr. Stites?
Quite frankly, I'm speechless for one of the first times in my life. Now we have disappearing cars on Thirty-Eighth, and where they're going, I have no idea. But I, you look, you know, if traffic's down fifteen percent on Thirty-Eighth between Wadsworth and Pierce, yet traffic's up on Thirty-Second, twelve percent between Wadsworth, that should tell you something. Now, where they're going after that, you know, I guess they're disappearing, I... I'm speechless, I truly am, I just, I would hope, before we do anything, we have public hearings on this to get the public input. You know, I don't know, as for myself, if I got to start selling hot dogs and tires or whatever to fit in down there, but our business is down, there's several businesses that are down, and how, how much do we have to affect these businesses before people start understanding that the road diet is not working? Now, you know, I think it's, like I said, the area that is attracting people there, you know, whether they be, I think it's great, the business, you know, Colorado Plus, the pizza place, in particular, things like that. But I just don't think it's the road diet that's going to do it. I think the road diet is hurting the rest of us. When this was started, I thought it was my understanding that the road diet would not impact the car flow, and it's seriously impacting the car flow. You know, we hear from people all the time that they're not driving it, they refuse to drive it, but I am speechless when it comes to the point where traffic's down on Thirty-Eighth fifteen percent, yet up on Thirty-Second, twelve percent, and it tells you nothing, and then where are the cars going? You know, I'm speechless, I really am.
Ms. Davis?
And then that, just one second.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
That one pop-up cafe that's in front of the old Cebichis, I have never seen somebody sit there, never, not even waiting for the bus or anything, so to me, that can go somewhere.
Ms. Davis?
I don't have a heck of a lot to say that other people haven't already said. I do, I've not liked that parking from the beginning, so since no one's brought that up, I'll bring it up, that back-end parking, I don't like it. And I would agree with the pop-up cafe, that the one in front of Cebichi, which it doesn't really loan itself to a pop-up cafe because it's got that wrought iron gate around it and a large, they already have like a large patio, so it's almost like waitstaff would have to hurdle an iron, you know, fence to go and, you know, serve people in the pop-up cafe, but, you know, I do think that it's data that needs to be carefully reviewed. I think, you know, in our District One and Two meetings, we did hear a lot of the folks talk about the side streets, not necessarily the major, you know, Thirty-Second and Forty-Fourth, but some of the side streets and the kind of traffic they might be seeing there, and they ask questions about that. I think, and everyone knows this is how I feel, as far as the landscaping and stuff, I'd rather do a small section right than have those goofy trees with the tinious petunias in all one color there, because I do think that it, you know, the intent is good, but I don't think that it's really sending a beautification message, so to speak, with some of the landscaping and stuff we're doing. So I'd rather do something in a section right than try to pull off two miles of iffy. That's just my thoughts, but I've said that from the beginning.
Ms. Stites?
Just one other thing, I was reading some stuff in the Charter, and you start doing permanent stuff on Thirty-Eighth, if it changes that flow line, and the Charter states if you change the flow line on a street, you got to take it to the vote of the people, so that's another thing that we better check into.
Any further comments? Is staff actually looking for any direction?
Not this evening.
I guess, I'd just like to observe that there is counterintuitive data in the traffic report, and I do read these things occasionally, and I kind of would suggest that when these questions were, and I will ask some questions offline, but I would like to suggest that there is a need to look at the north-south streets as well as the east-west streets. If you say you're looking at Pierce, that's probably the main one, but there are a couple of others of interest, because these cars really aren't disappearing at these major intersections, not just on Thirty-Second, but we have a differentiation. But, well, it looks like, although data we do have at Pierce on a number of the streets where there's clearly cars taking alternate routes, and, I mean, one has to almost conclude that they're going to Twenty-S sixth from what we have, but we'd like to know. And I've heard, frankly, I've heard significant complaints on Teller as well. I mean, I really, I mean, so I'd be interested if we can figure out where those eight or nine hundred cars a day are going, but I've actually heard quite a lot on some of those, so. I think it's interesting to note, just in general, that the actual decreased traffic time on the, on the report, I would almost argue is manageable. The most would be the, at school release, there's an extra minute and a half, but mostly other circumstances under a minute, and I do think we need to be concerned about any loss in business, but it would seem that the results are mixed and indeterminate on the, both on the accident data and on the business development data, so I think, from my standpoint, we need to keep watching. So that's, I think, with no, staff asking for no direction, we'll get an opportunity to talk at more length if, on the selection of a design or to see whether we move forward in the next phase. Next item on the agenda this evening is Sales Tax Ballot Question Timeline, and I believe Nate is going to be speaking to us on that. Thank you, Steve, thank you, Ken, yeah.
Hey, council. So, based on the direction from council to proceed with a ballot initiative, Patrick had asked me to put together a timeline for you guys, and when we started putting the dates down on paper, started realizing how little time we really have to proceed, so basically, we're about two months out from needing to have the ballot language approved by council, so we're looking at getting the ballot language from Jerry Dahl's firm on August second, bringing that to you guys at a study session just after that to have any discussion around that, then doing the first reading on August twelfth and the second reading on August twenty-sixth. That doesn't leave us any backup dates or anything in order to get that ballot language to the clerk. So once that information is certified on August twenty-sixth, that's when any city-sponsored activities regarding a ballot initiative would have to cease, and then it would go over to you guys and any city residents that want to push the initiative forward and advocate for that, so just wondering if you guys have any questions. Also, we wanted to talk a little bit about messaging. I know you guys wanted to keep the money from being earmarked necessarily for any specific projects, but Patrick and I were discussing and kind of wanted to see if there was any direction from you guys on what the message that you would feel comfortable when you're out knocking on doors and talking to people, because, you know, some of the things you guys mentioned at your council retreat were high priorities, like the tenure infrastructure plan, Clercreek Crossing Development Agreement, you know, should we come up with messages around those concepts that are part of your strategic plan so that you guys can go out, or what's your vision on what the message would be to your constituents to encourage them to vote yes on a sales tax increase?
Right, no, that's correct, Nate, and we just wanted to clarify that what we heard or what I heard at the retreat was a one percent increase in the sales in... what we heard, or what I heard at the retreat was a 1% increase in, in the sales and use tax rate and to leave it fairly open. So it's for both general and capital, can be used for general operating and capital expenditures. But as Nate mentioned, you know, I think most experts out there would tell you that it's, it's difficult to potentially get something passed without at least messaging how you're gonna use the money, even if you're not gonna necessarily maybe tie your hands so that you don't have flexibility. But we may wanna consider at least putting together some talking points and messaging of, of, you know, it's, it's gonna be used for this, to create a sustainable community and, and, you know, to continue maintenance and improvement of the city's infrastructure. I mean, you can put language together that doesn't necessarily tie your hands, but I think the voters are gonna wanna know, have some idea of what your thoughts are and where the money's gonna be spent.
Mr. Barnes?
Just to be clear, I wanna make sure I understand the difference between, you know, creating those, those points that we can have consensus on and use that communication with our constituents, and where that intersects with the actual language of the, of the ballot. So if I'm interpreting you correctly, they can be somewhat separated as, as issues that we can get pretty clear about how we, what we are intending and how we wanna talk about it. And that, that may or may not end up being a specific structure of the initiative itself.
Correct. With, with the taper question on a ballot, we're, we're pretty much stuck with, with language that has to be used. At least the, the beginning part of it. You know, shall taxes be raised, blah, 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 this certain amount. So it's all legal language. But you can, after that, after that specific language that you must include legally, you can include bullet points that this is what you're gonna get for your money. You're gonna get, you know, increased quality of life by this, or, or more, put it in more layman's terms so that voters know what they're gonna get. And, and, and you could use that in your campaign too, when you're out there talking to folks.
Okay.
I think in previous elections, there was really specific things the money was gonna go to, like we're gonna hire 10 police officers. So it was very, very specific after the fact what citizens could expect to get. Whereas this is more, you know, we want to use this to work on infrastructure projects without tying it to, say, a 44th project or a 38th or, you know. But I, I know, looking at some of the other initiatives, like the, the building of Better Denver, you know, they have a website specifically set up so that they can show the impacts of the money that's being, that was raised, you know. So that's something too, that if people are concerned about, well, you know, we don't wanna approve this because we don't know exactly where it's going, you know, there's ways that we can make sure after the fact that there's transparency to where that money is going. So we can show, you know, this is how much revenue was increased, and these are the additional projects that were done, and this is the status of that project. So you just kind of do it on the backside instead of telling them exactly what it's gonna be for in the beginning.
Ms. Jay?
It seems to me that the reason that we came to this conclusion that we needed a 1% sales tax increase, as I, as I recall, is twofold. And one, the, the most obvious that we do not have enough money for capital improvement, that we can cover our operating expense, but capital improvement, which is roads, of course, is, is a core function of a city. And by making that statement that we have reached that point, everybody knows that they, they have to take care of their home, et cetera. And number two, the fact that we're not raising our property tax, and where how low it is, is another valid point. And I, I think those two are strong enough in their own sense. And the fact that the sales tax, of course, is gonna be picked up by a lot of outside shoppers versus property tax, which is not. Is, is that enough, or do we need still to, to add some more? And I need to also have a clarity in my own mind as far as road improvements, et cetera. As I recall, our capital improvement budget is like gone after, is it this year or next year?
2014, I, I believe we're projected, we could have maybe a half, a half a million, depending on how this year's revenues come in and expenditures.
So we're looking at maybe a half a million that we could use next year.
Potentially. And, and-
And we have capital improvement needs of, what was the number? It was some huge number.
It's a huge number. But on an annual basis, just to keep up with our preventative maintenance of our roads and streets, we'd like to have at least 2 million. Just, just to keep up with annual crack sealing and asphalting.
Ms. Barnes? Ms. Ling, Mrs. Langsworthy? Mr. Demott? Stites? Mrs. Davis?
So I, I agree with Joyce as far as, you know, if we could word it in a way that's, you know, the sustainability of Wheat Ridge and drawing in, you know, I think there's, there's lots of projects. I know folks behind me, I, we've talked about, you know, Sherrose and, you know, trying to make it, make the city, improve city from all aspects, from, I would say, car, bike, walk. The other thing is, I, I do like to, and I don't know how we do this, but I, I feel from a marketing campaign and from that standpoint, the reason why I feel comfortable going out and talking about it is, one, currently, our sales tax is below, you know, a lot of our neighboring cities. And so we, we're only coming up to line or maybe a little above some of those around us. Where it's not like we're crazy, crazy over what everyone else is doing. So I think that's, that's a talkable point. I think the other thing we also talked about was, again, same with the property taxes, is that this is something that's gonna be shared with the people in our community, whether if you're a owner, a renter, a visitor, that everybody's gonna be sharing in this, this venture with us. And, and, and I think, you know, and I, I'm certain you guys have numbers, but I, I recall there were some numbers that a lot of the sales tax are by non-Wheat Ridge residents. And, and so I, I think that's a, a nice plus that the voters would grasp and think, okay, good, we're not only paying for this, but, you know, other folks around us are too. So those are just my thoughts as far as to how I would present it to folks, how we can kinda start a campaign with those notes as well.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. Barnes?
I agree that, I agree that trying to, to frame, you know, the reasons and, and the intent would be important. And that, a love, you know, that, I think all the things in, in general that we've talked about are things that we talked about at the retreat and that, that, that I would agree with in terms of certainly the infrastructure needs, the capital improvement needs, the idea of sustainability in that sense, moving forward, as well as the investment in quality of life and, and other, other, other things. So I, I would agree that crafting that would, would be important. And so to be specific, if I look at the schedule, it, it would, it would seem like we need to, to have some discussion about, about that over the course of the next month and a half in order to be prepared to, to give Council the right direction for August 2nd. I would also point out, I suppose, that District Three and Four have a meeting at the end of July. It would be nice to have, to be able to, to talk about, about that and, and be a little bit prepared to present that at that, at that meeting, which I believe is the, the week prior to this, to this date.
What's the date on?
Twenty, 29th? So-
Yep.
Anyway, for what, so, I, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly what you're looking for. But I, I would, I support trying to kind of-
All right. So I believe staff, if, correct me if I'm wrong, would be looking for a consensus to move forward along these timelines. And if there's a consensus, to have staff develop a talking point or, or, or some, some paperwork to support the arguments that we've put forward in time for the June, to discuss probably at the June 17th, July, I'm on, I got my dates wrong here, July 15th study session, to have a working session on the logic that we would be presenting to the community.
And, and the language.
And the lang, well, and, and the language, I suppose. So is that the direction staff is looking for?
Yeah. And actually, in our timeline, we suggested August 5th. You could go as late as August 5th to do a study session to talk about the draft ballot language. Wouldn't have to necessarily be July 15th. We could do both. That's true. That's true.
I think we ought to be looking at the faster-
Yep.
-timeline on the message.
Yep.
My, my sense, I'm sorry, I'm losing, forgetting I'm in the chair again. So my bad. That's the direction staff is looking for. Is that correct?
Yes. And, and just the general direction on, on, on the strategy and, and, and the direction that, you know, you wanna tell your community and residents of, of why you're, you're raising the sales tax. And, and I think we heard that tonight. And so we can start crafting some language and bring that back to you on July 15th. And I think the other, the other main point we'd like to get across tonight also is, as Nate put in his schedule, August 26th is when you will set the, the actual ballot language. So that's when the city has to be very careful about spending staff time and, and money on, on the issue at all. So, you know, some type of citizen group grassroots campaign needs to be working on it, potentially raising money if you wanna do any type of, if that group would like to do any type of flyers or mailings. So that's something that, you know, as a council and as an elected person, you really need to be thinking about forming that outside group to do the dirty work, the hard work when it comes down to it. You know, when, when we did this in 2004, you know, I think that was the main reason it was successful. We had a pretty active committee, raised money, and walked the streets and knocked doors and, and sent flyers out. So it, it, it's, it's a hard push, but it could be done if everybody works together. And, but it has, it's gonna have to be done on the outside, outside of the City Hall.
Mr. Demott?
I can make a suggestion. I think that it'd be better if we do maybe wait till August 5th study session to, to talk about this. We, you know, the July 29th meeting, I'll be kinda presenting it at the meeting. And it might be a good time to really listen to what people are looking for. You know, instead of just, here it is, this is what we're doing, it'd be nice to hear. I mean, we know, I mean, I don't know about we, I know that of my four years here, that, you know, there's something that needs to be done. I think this is a good option. Myself, I, I, you know, I've pushed to stay away from utility fees, utilities and fees, either road or stormwater or something like that. I think this is a good, the best option we have. And I'll present it as that. And, but I still would like to hear what people have to say. And that 29th meeting would really give us a good chance to hear what people are thinking before we actually make that final decision. So if we could, even if we talk about it on the 15th, maybe we can still-
Yeah, you don't-
-sweep it in a little bit on the 5th.
You won't have to make a final decision on the 15th. You can just-
What happens on the 29th.
You won't have to make the final decision until around August 2nd. So.
Mr. Barnes?
So I, I agree with, I agree with Joey. I mean, I think that's, I think that's right. I, I would like to, I mean, I think the exercise of getting the language, not, not finalizing the actual, the actual ballot itself, but to get the bullet points, even if, you know, just started to get them crafted so that you actually have something, you know, that, that you can say that we've talked about. And I, I think absolutely, I think that getting feedback would be, would be very important. But I do think it's an opportunity to stand up and kind of try to, try to articulate the consensus at that time. The language, I think, could easily change and be affected by input at that meeting or any, any others in between that time. So I, I don't disagree with you that we should be looking for feedback. I, I still think that we should try to, you know, try to craft these talk, bullet points, talking points, as it were, in advance of that so that, you know, that actually you're, you've got something that you're going up with that is consensus-based.
So that was a consensus?
Yeah. I, I-
Sorry, I wandered for a while. I lost-
Yeah. Sorry, I-
Well, I don't know if it was consensus, it was a response, it was a response to Joey.
You used the word and it woke me up.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, no.
I, I do think-
I was making notes and I was like, what?
I, I do think that, I mean, even in our District One and Two meeting, it did come up. He tapped ads around it, and I came right out and said it. But it was interesting to see, and, and I know George and Mike were there. And it was, it was interesting to see how people reacted. Because I think once things were explained, you know, that it was, you know, that the sales tax and, and how it is in line with other cities and that type of thing. I, I think that people understood more. And I think you did get kind of a consensus from the group that they understood that that might be a measure that has, we have to look at. I mean, we certainly didn't have it as formal as you guys will probably on, at your meeting. But I, you know, you didn't hear a lot of, you know, moans and groans and things thrown at us at the time. So I, I do agree that perhaps we kinda just start looking and talking about the talking points, see how, how it goes on the, the end of, in the end of July, and then kind of draft the final, you know-
Message.
Message, yeah.
Would any, does staff feel like they have enough direction?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So- So that brings us to our last actual item for tonight, the adoption of the 2011 National Electric Code. Mr. Schumacher or Mr. Johnson?
I'll start out. So the, the NEC, National Electrical Code, it's actually a separate regulatory document that's adopted by the, or developed and, developed and kind of delivered, I guess, for, for local jurisdictions to adopt by the National Fire Protection Association. So it's not associated with the International Family of Building Codes, which typically we involve Council more in, in terms of policy direction, because there's a number of kind of fill-in-the-blank questions and a number of more options in our mind of, of different ways that you can go in terms of fine tuning those for local needs. But that said, it's still an important regulatory document that would impact how, you know, how we regulate construction in the city. So we're here to get your direction as to whether we should move forward with adoption of that NEC here in the next several months prior to a consideration of adopting a new version of the International Codes, which is actually on our list of things to do for later in 2013 as well. So the 2011 versions of the code are what is most current with, from the National Fire Protection Association. That's what we're proposing for consideration and adoption. We've worked with the city attorneys off to sign crafting a draft ordinance. We're not recommending any local amendments. We consider it to be a very technical document. As I mentioned earlier, there really aren't those fill-in-the-blank questions or opportunities for more of the administrative logistics. It's, it's really adopting the NEC by reference. Now, as we often do when we're at it, we look for opportunities to clean up the code. So John, working with, with Jerry Doll's office and Carmen Berry, has proposed consolidating the various administrative aspects of administering the NEC into one section, Section 577 of the code. So that's the only kind of item of note in terms of actual changes to the code of laws that we would propose. I would note that the state has already adopted the 2011 version of the codes, as have several of our neighboring jurisdictions. So as, as we always do, we're trying to align so that we have a consistent regulatory environment with those other, those other agencies. And as I mentioned, we, we are still considering moving forward with Council and the public, adoption of the full family of international codes later, later this year. So that's the, the direction that we're requesting, whether you're ready to move forward into the formal ordinance adoption process.
Questions? Ms. Stites?
Yeah, why, and what is the difference? Why do you have the National Code and now you have a, a fire code? Why do you have, uh, the national code, and now you have a, a fire code for the fire department, what is, why? Might I ask?
I'm not, I might defer that to John as to what the history for that separation is.
So there were at 1.3, what they call model code organizations, those, um, organizations joined together, um, in the early 90s, so that they could consolidate those codes, um, and, um, eventually they became the International Code Council, and they produced all of the international codes. The National Fire Protection Association has, um, always existed at the same time as those other model code organizations chose not to join with them. Um, they were the, um, chief constructors of the electrical code. Um, they actually, at the time that the other model code organizations joined together, tried to create their own versions of all of the other codes also, but they were not widely accepted because those other organizations were already in place. However, um, those folks in the international, um, code arena were not interested in fighting the NFPA for the electrical code. They do have, um, a small, um, ICC electrical code that basically references this National Fire Protection Code. So, the international fire code itself actually falls under the international codes and, and, um, all of those organizations that work with the fire code have joined together with, um, the other international code council, um, organizations, but the NFPA has stayed separate, and, um, handles just the electrical code, and they do that, um, around the world, and it's pretty widely accepted, was at the time. And so it's sort of just stayed there in place, uh, um, separate from the international codes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any double whammies there, one from the other or whatever, but, okay.
At some point when we do the international code adoption, um, it will reference, um, the international electrical code, but that's, it's, um, quite honestly about a 14-page document, just is a little bit administrative, because the NFPA version of the electrical code, um, doesn't have administrative portions, and it references the NFPA version of the electrical code throughout.
Mr. DeMont.
Does this, would it affect current license holders at all? Would they have to retest or anything on this?
They would not, actually, um, the state required, um, electrical, the, the state administers licensing for electrical contractors. We, um, and other municipalities register them, we do not license them or require any testing, um, or any formal license process other than registration, we don't charge a fee, that's all part of state law. The state does the testing, and they actually did some new testing. Um, in the last 18 months, they required all electrical contractors to test through the state, so we wouldn't handle any of that, and, and, um, all of those individuals who tested under the state testing requirement in the last 18 months did it under this code, under the 2011, so.
That was my second question, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. J, Mr. Pont, Mrs. Langworthy?
So, the, the, last time we have our code is 2005. We adopted the 2005, now we're adopting the 2011. Do they amend this code every year, and we just choose which years we're gonna upgrade, or we kind of play it by what the state does?
Typically, um, the codes, um, whether it's the NFPA version of the electrical code or the international codes are, um, amended and redistributed every three years. So, um, we're on the 2000, or we're going to the 2011 if this is approved, to 2012 is the version of the international. Um, so the state will typically adopt the new version within about six months of it coming out, which they did with the 2011. And typically municipalities such as ours wait about a year to 18 months after the new version, just quite honestly, 'cause there's some bugs sometimes in there, in terms of the language where it's a little overlap, and, um, municipalities like ours let the state work that kind of, in the first year, they work all of that out, and then we get to benefit from the work that they do for that first year.
Thank you.
More comments or questions? I have a, I have a couple. First, I'm, um, I'm just a little uncomfortable, but we'll have an opportunity, uh, in moving this forward without Mr. Starker present, who has considerably more expertise in this field than certainly I do. And I, I know he had issues, but perhaps we can handle that without changing the scheduling.
We can reach out to him?
Yeah, uh, separately and make sure that he has no objections. I'm also under the impression that you held some meetings, uh, with members of the community, or, I mean, the, the electrical contracting community or something like that, some outreach to, for comments.
Yeah, it was, it was back in March, was it?
And, and you don't reference any commentary or, or, we, we don't have any information from the outcome of those meetings?
Yeah, we, we don't think we got a lot of comments that were substantive to the code amendments, it was our initial meeting that we invited all of our contractors out, uh, that John hosted, um, as part of the kickoff of the, the 2012 I codes as well. I think more of the comments that we received were just, uh, kinda logistics about, you know, things that we can do better differently in terms of how we interface with them, we, we've, um, we've fine tuned some of our inspection scheduling, um, processes a little more, as we always are looking for opportunities for improvement, but we didn't get any substantive comments on the codes themselves.
Okay, I was just interested in that, that was really my only question. So I guess, as always, staff would be wanting to know if they can have a consensus to move an issue forward, um, or not, or if somebody wants to?
I, I would, I would recommend that we move this forward, bring ourselves in alignment with the state.
Are there any objections to the electrical code being brought forward at the?
That's correct.
Seeing no objections, it passes by consensus. Before we move to elected officials matters, I just wanted to point out that the two items we had on the July 1st study session, land banking, which is honor, the mayor brought forward, and Amendment 64 marijuana implementations were both pulled. So we now have the opportunity to take the first half of 1st of July off on a 4th of July week, and I was wondering if my colleagues here, anyone wanted to make a consensus to cancel the July 1st s- study session? All right, somebody needs
I, I am gonna be on vacation that week anyway, so, I would, uh, recommend consensus to, uh, cancel the July 1st study session in, in regard to the July 4th holiday.
Are there any objections to it, Mr. DeMont? Seeing none, it, you had to have been quick on that. I would ask s- staff to bring forward or, uh, uh, whatever, got it? On to elected officials reports, if any, is anybody?
I have a quick something.
Sure.
So, um, I don't know, Patrick, have you heard anything about King Supers yet? Because I was told that their official reopening is gonna be Wednesday.
This Wednesday, no, I haven't heard a thing.
Okay.
We will check on that and, and get an email out if that is the case, but they haven't contacted us.
That's what, well, my husband works there, and so, I'm always asking when they're actually gonna be done, but he said it was, that they're, they have it pegged for this Wednesday.
Knew they were shooting for mid-June, but, um, they haven't contacted us.
I got an email today that it was supposed to be Wednesday at 9:00.
This Wednesday at 9:00.
This Wednesday, right?
Yeah, 19th.
And, um, the, the changes have been so, have been well received so far, and their sales have gone up. They're not where that store should be at, but considering where they were at pre-remodel sales, they've doubled, prema- pre-remodel sales. So they're working in a very upward trend, so.
Other elected, Ms., Mrs. Jay? Thank you, Ms. Pont. Mrs., we did that anymore, Joey? Mr. Steitz? Mrs. Davis? I have just, uh, one, um, real quick, I, uh, which I think supports what we're trying to do this year in terms of the sales tax. I suppose it's a referendum. I did attend the Metro Mayor's Conference last week, and, um, the Don Hunt, the director of, of CDOT, was in again pitching a where they were at for trying to raise infrastructure money, and they intend to move forward in 2014 uh, with a statewide sales tax to support highways. Likewise, they believe, um, that the apartment, that higher education is gonna run a red referendum in 2014 as well, and that there's likely to be some statewide K through 12, uh, on the 2014 ballot. So, I'm of the opinion that it's a good thing that we're on the 2013, uh, ballot, and we ought to make our best foot forward, 'cause it's not gonna get any better. So I just thought, might be interesting, now, that's all I have tonight, if, is there any other, did we miss anything, anybody? With that?
Mr. Reinhardt?
I'm sorry?
I just, I just wanted to, I should, uh, say this at the beginning of a meeting rather than the end of the meeting, but I just wanna encourage all of you, when you speak, please speak into the microphones and speak loudly. Sometimes your comments don't even make the tape recording. Not very much, but there's been occasions where you can't even tell what was said, so, if I have a hard time hearing you in here, you can usually rely on the tape, but if you don't speak into the tape, your words aren't preserved for posterity, so, please remind yourself and remind each other to, put that microphone close and speak nice and loudly, thank you.
I'm sorry, uh, there's one more, Mr. Doll has a staff report, I, I tried to cut him off, but I failed.
Oh, man. Quick, quick staff report on the, the ve- mayor's veto and sort of the procedure around that, I try to remember each time there is one of those, they come up rarely, but to just give you a heads up ahead of time, to say, here's, here's how that all works and there are the rules for that, I don't have an opinion about how you apply the rules, I never do, as you know, but rather than me trying to, on the, while you're on the dais next Monday, and we're in the middle of it, tell you what the procedure is if you would wish to follow it, both for the, the veto override and in the event that it happens, if you wanted to reconsider the ordinance, the, all of that would have to happen next Monday, given the charter and uh, council rules requirements. Uh, and I'll, pardon me, bring these notes with me, but a couple of things, this is a legislative matter, so it's not quasi-judicial, which means you can discuss it amongst yourselves and, to any degree you wish. Because it's legislative, Councilmember Pont, who was not there last week, is able to fully participate. That's, that's the way it is with legislation, you inform yourself to the degree you wish, and then you show up and you vote, so there's that. To the extent, uh, there is to be a veto override, that has to happen at the next meeting after the veto, which would be the 24th, so next Monday is your only window to do any of this stuff. Uh, someone can, any council member can, can move to override the veto by charter, that has to pass by a maj- uh, by a three-quarters majority, quote, of the entire council, which means six votes, no matter how many of you are in the room that night, so it's, it's gotta be six votes, not three-quarters of however many are there, it's, it's six. If that motion isn't made, or if it's made and fails, then the veto sticks, the ordinance is not passed, and we're done. Uh, if the override passes, then the ordinance is effective, or at least it's been adopted. And you, it basically brings you back to the point in time right after you did second reading and you approved it. I've looked at the ordinance, it has the standard 15-day, uh, after publication effective date, so it won't be effective right away, but it's deemed passed. The rule of law is that during that time, before an ordinance that's been vetoed, has been veto overridden, you have the right to reconsider that ordinance, your council rules provide for reconsideration, and again, that's a six-vote number. So if, if all these things happen in this particular way, and the veto is, is overturned, then if you do nothing further, then the ordinance is just, um, effective and you're done. You can choose if you wish to, if you wanted to amend that ordinance. The only way to do that would be after the veto is overturned, if it is, to take a motion to reconsider, and what you're reconsidering is the last motion you made, and if you remember, that was the amended motion to adopt it on second reading. I forget, that there was someone had made an amendment, I think to move that number, uh, on the handicap parking down. That passed, and then the motion as amended passed on, on second reading, so it would have to be someone who voted for, I think that was a, that was a six to one, I think, vote, but someone who voted for that ordinance on second reading in the end would be able to make a motion to reconsider. That motion has to pass by six votes, if it doesn't pass, you're done. If it does pass, then what you've done is you've gotten in a time machine and moved back one more step till just before you adopted the motion on second reading. So it's as if no one had moved to adopt the ordinance on second reading now. Then someone can move to adopt it on second reading, uh, and, because it would be before you had amended it, it'd still have that higher number in it, so someone would be able, I expect, to move, to amend to a, to a different number, to a different fine number, I'm not saying you must, I'm just saying this is how it's been out. That amendment passes, you kinda go through, in a sense, what you went through just before the veto. Uh, then you have an amended motion conce- conceivably, and, uh, if that passes, then you've, you've, uh, effectively readopted the ordinance with a different amendment, uh, as a reconsideration. If, if you merely overturn the veto and do nothing else, then what you end up with is the motion, is the ordinance that you in fact did pass on second reading, and, and that's, you know, that's your choice.
Mr. Doll, can we go ahead, is there anything that precludes us going ahead and putting that motion for, to overturn onto the agenda?
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
You add it to the agenda like you'd add anything else.
It, it, so, but if it's not overturned, then it's as if nothing happened.
If the veto's not overturned, then you have, the, the ordinance was, the veto stands, and the ordinance
Is gone.
Is, is gone.
Failed, okay.
Yeah, that's right. It goes back, yeah, whatever, yeah. It goes back to that three-tier fee schedule for the handicap, and I think, I'm not, I think we, I think we had a three-tier on the major motor vehicles too, you know, it was also in the ordinance.
No, I was just
All right, so we voted for 150, it's been vetoed by Jerry.
Right.
At the, he's vetoing it, 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 I'm actually, his veto makes it change to 300.
No.
It's a null and void altogether.
Null and void altogether, okay, shoot. But then we have to revote.
Yeah, he could only veto an ordinance, he can't veto a motion that you made, or
Okay.
you know, an amendment, it, there's not the, sort of that, that precision. He, he, his power under the charter is to veto the whole thing.
But if we override the veto?
Yes.
Then it goes back to the 150?
It goes back to, yes, the version that you passed on second reading, which was the 150.
That's my question.
And if, if, with, well, the 150 actually represented an amendment.
The amendment was 150.
Yeah. So if, if you override the veto, you go back to 150. If you're happy with that, quit. If you're not, or if enough of you aren't, then somebody makes a motion to amend again, and you find another number, you find, you know, 240, or 180, or 500, it's up to you. That's a regular, yeah, then, then you're into the regular adoption, five votes gets you there. Uh, process.
Override the veto, and then
Then we're done.
we decide to accept the amended, we'd have to make a motion to, um...
If you override the veto, you get, you get the, uh, ordinance as you finally amended it, which was 150.
Okay.
So if the 150 is your goal, you override the veto and you quit.
And then, but, but if you do, one point of clarification, if you do want it to be something other than, other than that, is it a reconsideration or an, or an amendment? 'Cause at, at first I thought you meant that it, said that it had to be reconsider-
It's a reconsideration and then an amendment. Because, I mean, yeah, yeah, let me just replay for a minute. Remember, what, what you have is a
Yeah, but the reconsideration is six.
That's right.
Remember, the prevailing party could make a motion to reconsider.
To reconsider. If, if all you want, or if all majority of your, or the majority of you want is to go back to where you ended up last time before the veto, which was 150, all you need to do is unwind the veto. And, and then you have an effective ordinance at 150. If you wanna have some other number, you've gotta do, you've gotta override the veto, and then you've gotta move to reconsider where you're now at, which is 150, and then you move back one more, one more you move back one more, one more slot in the, in the time machine to the point, just before you started taking the motions on the ordinance, somebody moves the ordinance that's in the packet, we'll make sure it is, and then somebody moves an amendment for a, for a, a fine amount that they want, and we vote on that amendment, just as we did last time. And if that amendment goes on, then you vote on the whole ordinance.
Can I ask a?
We could start over again.
No. Well, my question is, is if the veto stands, what would be the fine on that ticket? Because it's not 300, it's.
Staggered fine.
It was a back to the staggered program, okay.
Right.
That's why I went, I couldn't remember where we were at before all that.
All right, have we wore that out yet?
Yes.
Meeting?
Now you can see why I wanted to. And now you can see why I wanted to kind of play it a little bit tonight, so that you can percolate on that.
Thank you.